Hey there, everybody. It's Brian Castellanos from the Lynn School Committee. I want to first off say thank you to Lynn Community Television for welcoming me back. I am a third-term Lynn School Committee official. My name is again Brian Castellanos and I am a proud Lynn Public School graduate. I graduated from Lynn English. I later attended Framingham State University where I graduated with my bachelor's of criminology and criminal justice law. And I went on to get more education at Salem State University where I got my master's of science in criminal justice. I'm here to discuss my candidacy for this upcoming election. I will be pursuing my fourth term on the Lynn School Committee and I would love to just chat about some of the work that I've done, some of the work that we're doing now, and some of the forward-thinking that's happening right now in the district and some of the work that I've been part of. Again, I'm a licensed social worker. I've been serving as a child protective service social worker for some time now. I wear many hats in child welfare as a response investigator. I currently serve as the Northern Regional Missing or Absent Specialist where I'm obligated in duty to recover critically missing juveniles who go missing or absent from care. I'm also an emergency response investigator for the City of Lynn DCF Area Office where I get to work cohesively on the statewide hotline. We investigate cases of child abuse and neglect. We thoroughly check those and vet those cases out in partnership with our partners at Lynn PD and the District Attorney's Office. I've been very passionate and dedicated to working child welfare issues at the local, state, and federal level. I have dedicated my life's work to protecting children and families, our most vulnerable families and children at that level. As a school committee member, for the past five years, I have stewarded the issues that a lot of our most vulnerable students and families face. I've worked rigorously the past five years to ensure that the district has been strategically invested in social-emotional learning initiatives. I was part of the K-5 SEL curriculum development where we worked diligently to make sure that our schools were trauma-informed, that staff had the support that they needed to work with our students and our families who are stricken with hardships and struggles. And mental health issues really don't have a bias. It's been my life's work at that point, you know, when we first got SEL. Mental health has been the driver of my passion to do this work. Mental health is crucial. I think we saw what the pandemic has left and what really needs to get done is to make sure that we have the right advocates and the right strategies in place in this district to address the issues that we see in our school district. And that leads me to, you know, right now, you know, school safety has been a major priority. It's been very challenging in this district. It's been challenging across the country. It's going to be a focus area of mine this upcoming election term. It's always been my priority to make sure that the district remains committed to making sure that we appropriate the right funds and resources to security enhancements. We do have a school resource officer line item that we are looking at right now that's fully at capacity, but we need to do more. We need to do more in terms of sustainability around school safety and we need to really, really aim at prevention and figure out ways to be solution-focused, not so reactive. So I've been working with the district on the different initiatives across the city, from elementary to middle school to high school. Very important work that's being done and that's something that I'm very committed to. And I've been very, very outspoken about the issues that we face currently when it comes to school safety for staff and our students and their families. And every student deserves to be safe. Every staff should be feeling safe at their school district level and we got to make sure that we're applying pressure to the district to accomplish that. Another area of work that I've been on ongoing is the, I'm on the Pickering Building School Committee. At this term, I've been selected to work on the Pickering Building School Committee to build out a new middle school that we so desperately need. It's been a rigorous process that we're engaging in with MSBA. I've been an ambassador to that process. It takes a village to do this committee. It's been wonderful. It's been a learning experience that I cherish so much. I want to be able to continue my work with the community, with the stakeholders involved to make sure that we get that school built and that we're able to build out a sustainable project that we all can be proud of for our staff, our students, and the families of that jurisdiction. Again, I'm looking to get back on the school committee for my fourth term. I'm asking for one of your six votes. I'm humbly grateful for all of the support out there that I've gotten over the years. It's something that I don't take for granted and I want to say thank you all for your time.
Hello, everyone. My name is Eric Dugan and I'm running for reelection to the Lynn School Committee. I'm a lifelong and proud educator. For the last 20 years, I have dedicated my professional career to teaching and educational leadership. I've also volunteered in many aspects in our city. Both of my sons enjoy playing sports and I have volunteered in many capacities in the youth sports programs throughout the city. I bring a perspective of a community leader and a professional educator to the committee. I believe this perspective is critical to balance out the committee. My wife, a teacher in the Lynn Public Schools, and I have raised our two great children in Lynn and are very proud to call it our home. Both of my children attended Lynn Public Schools and had a great experience. They both graduated from Lynn Classical and are doing very well. The Lynn Public Schools had a lot to do with that. About a year and a half ago, when I was elected for the first time, it was a brand-new team. Half the school committee was new, the mayor was new, there were some new city councilors, and the City of Lynn was geared to head into a new and exciting chapter. It was a very exciting time to be part of this as an elected official. This new direction has had its twists and turns, but through it all, the school committee stayed focused on the students and educators of Lynn and I am very proud of that. I'm also very proud of the work the other committee members and I have accomplished. We've worked very hard and have had to overcome many obstacles. Some of the work that I've gotten done is I've served on three subcommittees. They are the Athletic Subcommittee, the Curriculum Subcommittee, and the Policy Subcommittee, which I am also the chair of. As a member of the Athletic Subcommittee, we are working on improving student engagement in sports. One of the initiatives is to increase the engagement at the middle school level with the hopes that this will carry into high school. I was also instrumental in getting the Bovarrini Basketball Tournament back to the city where it belongs. As a member of the Curriculum Subcommittee, I have researched and voted to approve new and modern curriculums that will help our students and teachers in the modern classroom. As the chair of the Policy Subcommittee, I have worked tirelessly to bring our policy manual up to date. This has taken hours of work that I am very proud of. I voted to approve two budgets over the last few years that have seen historic educational spending in this city, spending that will have an impact on our students in the near future. I voted to approve the Frederick Douglass Collegiate Academy. This is a one-of-a-kind collaboration with North Shore Community College that allows our high school students to begin to earn college credits while attending high school at the North Shore Community College campus. As far as I know, this is one of only two in the country like this. We have seen an increase in student voice. The students have a seat at the table like never before and it's exciting to hear them and their views on the schools that they attend, both the good and the bad. I've served on multiple hiring committees that have brought new and diverse leadership to the Lynn Public Schools. This list of leaders includes our new superintendent, Dr. Alvarez. Our students will be able to see themselves in these new leaders and will be able to envision a life like these positive role models lead. If you see it in your mind, then you can achieve it. These leaders will help the children see it in their minds. So things are moving in a positive direction for sure. However, there's more work to do and some of the things I'd like to accomplish in my second term are the following. We will get a new Pickering built. We have to advocate for our community throughout every phase of this process. As a school committee member, I will be vocal to the other elected officials in the city to get on board with this. Also, I'll work to be transparent to the community so that we can work together to get this immensely important project done that's important for the whole city. In my next term, student safety has to be the priority. We saw too many instances, especially in our high schools and middle schools this past year, that had the whole community shook. We can no longer ignore it and hope that it goes away on its own. It won't. Our policies on school safety need to be updated and revamped. Being the chair of the Policy Committee, I will directly work with Dr. Alvarez and her team to do just that. Our students and educators deserve that. Though we have come to some agreements with the Lynn Teachers Union about how to make class sizes smaller, it's time to start implementing some strategies to do just that. Our students and educators deserve classrooms that are manageable. And finally, it's time to start giving our graduates more avenues for a successful and productive life after LPS. Many kids go to college, many find a trade, but I believe we can do more. First off, as I mentioned earlier, we need to improve student engagement in our athletic programs. Our athletic directors and coaches work hard, no doubt. I've seen it firsthand with my own children. However, the admin team needs to do more to help them. There are 17,000 students in Lynn Public Schools. More should and could be playing sports out of high school. I want to see more signing days at the end of the year. Doesn't mean that you need to get huge scholarships to a huge D1 program. There's plenty of ways to play sports at the next level and it will in turn expose our student athletes to higher education. We also need to push the arts in the same way. Student engagement can and should be higher in the arts program as well. Again, there are 17,000 students in our schools. There is so much untapped talent. This could also provide a post-high school avenue for our students. So I have more work to do and the only way I can do it is with your support. It is a crowded field with some very qualified candidates and I'm going to need your help. So please vote Eric Dugan on Tuesday, September 5th in the primary and again, November 7th in the general election. Send me back and let me continue to be the leadership that students deserve.
Hello, I'm Lorraine Gately and I'm running for my fifth term on Lynn School Committee. Thank you Lynn Community TV for this opportunity to speak to you today. I'm proud to say I was born and raised in Lynn and graduated from Lynn Public Schools. I raised my son in Lynn and he also graduated Lynn Public Schools in 2013. I had a 33-and-a-half-year career in Lynn doing what I loved, teaching the students of Lynn. I retired in 2013 as the lead science teacher at Pickering Middle School. In March of 2014, I began working part-time at St. Mary's High School, teaching science and introduction to engineering design until June 2020. As I aspire to my fifth term, I will highlight some of the developments I've supported over my tenure. Each highlight represents positive accomplishments for Lynn Public Schools. As a former Pickering science teacher, I know all too well how much we need a new Pickering. That's why I took on the role this past term as chair of Building and Grounds Committee. It was so important to me to be an advocate to get Pickering back in the MSBA pipeline and see it through. In my fifth term, I will work to ensure the plans get approved by DESI. During my first two terms, the committee was informed of the great need for at-risk students in our district, an initiative called Social-Emotional Learners. We supported the call for this need by adding more social workers. I will continue supporting our health and wellness initiatives to improve the mental health of students and staff. I will continue to support the positive growth of early college, which has opened up great opportunity. One recent example of early college work I've supported is the Frederick Douglass Academy, which continues to thrive and is set to add a 10th grade in September of 2023. It has been very important to me to make our district competitive in hiring and retaining excellent teachers in Paris. The committee supported the use of student opportunity funds to align teacher pay so we can successfully compete with other districts and provide a strong compensation package to our teachers in Paris. After-school programs have been a stated priority of mine from the beginning. Our committee has supported more ways to have after-school programs and expand successful ones in place. I will continue to advocate for meaningful after-school programs. Overcrowding is a critical issue and as a school committee member, I have shared and supported many ideas towards alleviating overcrowded schools. Some of the examples include supporting the purchase of new modular classrooms, the development of Discovery Program at Tech, and the development of Frederick Douglass Collegiate Academy. I will continue to strongly advocate for and support more solutions to overcrowded in our schools. Some of the most important work I have been a part of and will continue to care deeply about is curriculum. Our students deserve the best and most effective curriculum that Lynn Public Schools can provide and I will always be devoted here and the community can expect me to be consistent in the fifth term. Our school committee has hired Dr. Alvarez as our new superintendent. We are eager to support her as we move forward. We all know the pandemic caused our district to fall behind, but Dr. Alvarez has assured us that she has many plans to increase our student scores to what they were pre-pandemic. She stated at our last school committee meeting, Lynn will be a shining star, that our future is brilliant. The school committee works as a team and we each have our own reasons for being part of it. My objective is to make certain our students in Lynn are prepared for their future. My hope is they stay in Lynn and make it a better place. I can honestly say I have seen many of my former students, now adults, contributing to make Lynn a better place every day and I am so proud of them and all their accomplishments. Voters can be confident in me that I will remain a strong advocate for the betterment of Lynn Public Schools. I will devote time and energy to the positive changes already well underway and I will always remain strong on areas of concern. My love for the Lynn Public Schools has successfully driven my career as a teacher and as a school committee member. I will continue to have the best interests of the students, represent the parents, and listen to the teachers' voices. I will raise important issues that concern all. I humbly ask for one of your six votes on November 7th so I can continue to serve our district. Thank you very much and have a nice day.
Hi, everyone. My name is Sandra Miguelina Lopez and I'm running for representative of the school. I want to hold this position because I want to support the students and the parents in the path of school. My biggest interest is that when these children leave those 12 years of being in school, they will have a direction and a knowledge of what they want to do. Then I also want to help with the disadvantaged children. And I also want to have an interaction with those children who are not disabled with what they are. So that bullying and benevolence can stop and participate. And I also want to help the parents to be part of the education of their children. Change the mentality that school is responsible for education. Here we are, all responsible, especially the parents. I also want to implement projects that I will introduce in the future so that both the disadvantaged children and the normal children in school who are not disabled can benefit from these projects and have a better direction in education. I also want to have a discipline, a direction, and correction so that education is emphasized in the school. I think if private schools implement a direction, a discipline, and education, the public school has to double the commitment to execute this so that it is also in a better standard. I also want the school to have amendments that apply to what is in question. I would like that there are changes in favor of the students. My life in the city of Lynn has been very gratifying. I live 23 years in this city. I have a child of 22 years and I studied medicine in UMass Lowell. All this time, I've been concerned about being a part of the school committee because I know that my projects will be of great help for the development of children in schools and for the development of the students. But I also want to help the teachers to not have so much responsibility in school. And I also want to tell them that I've worked in different organizations like Neighborhood to Neighborhood and Highland Coalition. I'm also a teacher. I work for Lynn Tech in the program of adults. I give classes in cooking and floristry. That's our order. I'm counting on the support of all voters. I hope that they will vote and that this time we pass and are at the school committee and can do a good job. Hello, my name is Sandra Miguelina Lopez. I'm running for the school committee and I hope to have the support from every single person who voted in this campaign this time because I know this time we're going to work and we're going to fight together. My purpose to running is because I want to help the students to be more productive and to incorporate them to a different style and system where they can go out from the school with purposes and have clear what they want to do after they finish the college. So I want to work very hard to bring more support and more funds to the school system for helping the kids with disabilities. I want to work hard and I have a project to present it, to implement for those kids who have a lot of need or community need to help allow those kids and have more benevolence with those kids. And then I believe the school system needs to be working more to integrate those kids in the program. And another thing that I want to be working very hard is the interaction, the parent and the professor and make sure that the parent understands that the education starts at home, not in the school. The school directs the education that they bring from the house. So I feel so happy to be in this role in this moment because I know that I'm going to do a good job. I'm doing, working in the community and as of right now, I prove that I do a good job and everything that I support and then I do a good representation of the position that I wanted to afford in this campaign. Again, my name is Sandra Miguelina Lopez. I'm running for the school committee and I'm waiting to hear from you to support me in my campaign and to support me with your vote on September 5th, November 7th.
Hi, my name is Tiffany Magnolia and I am a candidate running for school committee. I am finishing my first term on the school committee and I am running for reelection. First, I'd like to tell you a little bit about myself. I am the parent of a child in the Lynn Public Schools and I have watched my child go all the way through elementary school and now heading into middle school. I'm also a professor at North Shore Community College and I have been there since 2004 with my primary office being on the Lynn campus. I'm an English professor there and I run our honors program. And I've been interacting with Lynn Public School graduates since the moment I started there, both recent and folks who are coming back for furthering their education. I've lived in Lynn since 2004 when I bought a home near St. Pius and I've been involved in a number of different activities throughout the city, the Community Path, the Latina Center Maria's, as well as a number of different organizations that my daughter participates in, including Girl Scouts and RAW Arts. In terms of what I have done on the school committee and what I would like to do on the school committee, my first term saw a lot of change. As most of you know, our superintendent left. We had a year of an interim superintendent and we've hired a new superintendent. During that time, we also saw the influx of money from the Student Opportunity Act as well as funds for the pandemic coming to an end. It is really important to understand that the role of the school committee with regards to making sure our budget is handled well and that we make strategic investments in our future is something that I take really seriously and it seems like so far, our focus has been on people and that is where I would also like to put my priorities for my next term. In terms of other parts of the school committee that I have some effect on, I am the chair of the curriculum committee and I'm on the policy committee. The curriculum committee stewards the process of ensuring that curriculum is aligned with state standards and that the materials we're choosing are appropriate for our students. I'm very happy to have presided over materials for our dual-language programs and to make sure that our textbooks are up to date. I know that national news has led people to believe that book banning is something that they should be worried about, but I can assure you, here in Lynn and especially under my direction as the curriculum chair, that's not going to be an issue we have to deal with. Our folks in Bennett Street who are in charge of these materials are excellent at their job and they ensure that high-quality materials are available for every student in Lynn along with the teachers who select the materials for their classrooms. In terms of policy, this is kind of boring, but it's really important that our policies are updated. I was really proud to work on the policy regarding the student dress code and making sure that it is legally compliant. It resulted in basically taking the dress code and making it gender-neutral, which is something I'm really, really proud of. In terms of what I'd like to accomplish in the future, one of the things that I think is really important for school committee members to do is to have an idea of what they want to do as well as what they are capable of accomplishing. And one of the things I think is really important to look at for the Lynn Public Schools is how we are addressing the issues of equity. Now, our new superintendent has really focused on equity. She has created a new department that's going to be data-driven with regards to equity and I think it would be a really good idea for us to use these resources to make sure that items like discipline, items like resources, items like how extracurriculars get divided up among the schools are really all addressed through the lens of equity. It's really easy in Lynn to do a one-size-fits-all approach and this is not necessarily in the best interest of our students. To take an equity approach means looking at what each school needs and making sure it has the funding, the resources that it needs to achieve that. Data is a really important tool in that and so I'm really happy with the new superintendent's focus to make sure that we can make data-driven decisions. Here's why you should send me back to the school committee. One of the strengths I bring to the school committee is a deep knowledge of education and educational policy. I think those folks who have watched my performance on the school committee thus far can see that I asked some really good questions and I would really like to continue to be that voice on the school committee. I would really like to continue to be a parent voice on the school committee and I would really like to continue to be a bridge between the K-12 that our school committee oversees and the higher education that I know just from my work outside of it. Thank you for your time. I ask for your vote in November.
Hi, my name is Lenny Peña. I'm a member of the Lynn School Committee and I'm running for reelection. I'm a parent who's vested and committed to our Lynn Public Schools. My wife and I reside in East Lynn on Engel Street and three of our, well, our three youngest children all attend Lynn Public Schools. I'm an employee of the Lynn Water and Sewer Commission. I am an employee and I volunteer at the Lynn YMCA and I volunteered throughout the city with many other youth sports programs. I was endorsed by the North Shore Labor Council. I'm a member of the Board of Directors of Lynn Community Enrichment Program. I'm also the owner and founder of Linners Against Drug Abuse. We're a nonprofit who specializes in bringing awareness and prevention to the community. We're a nonprofit who specializes in bringing awareness and prevention to the community and just bringing resources together for the community. I was also part of the Superintendent Search Committee and we chose a great candidate for our Lynn Public Schools. And I'm also, I was also on the Negotiation Committee and we negotiated a very, very fair contract for our educators to help retain our educators and move forward. I asked for your vote September 5th and November 7th for reelection, so we could continue moving forward with the strategic plan that we have set in place for Lynn Public Schools. Mi nombre es Lenny Peña. Soy miembro del comité escolar y estoy corriendo para reelección. Soy un padre que estoy comprometido y estoy invertido en la escuela pública de Lynn. Tengo tres niños que asiten la escuela pública de Lynn. También soy empleado del Departamento de Agua. También soy empleado y hago mucho voluntario en la YMCA de Lynn. Y soy, fui patrocinado por el North Shore Labor Council. Soy miembro de la directiva de Lynn Community Enrichment Program. También soy dueño y fundador de Lynn Contra el Abuso de Drogas. Somos un sin lucro que nos enfocamos en traer previsión e información para todo en cómo dejar de, a lo que sufren de abuso de sustancia y de salud mental. Le iba a decir que soy miembro del comité que estaba en boca del nuevo superintendent de Lynn y por primera vez tenemos una hispana directora, alguien, tenemos una latina o latino que está encargada de la escuela pública de Lynn. Y yo fui parte también del equipo de negociación que le buscamos el mejor contrato a los maestros y para poder retener maestros y educadores, también hablo para profesionales. So le pido, por favor, el día 5 de septiembre y el día 7 de noviembre, voten Lenny Peña para nosotros continuar juntos, para seguir una dirección buena para los estudiantes y para la ciudad de nosotros. Gracias.
Hello fellow Linners. Thank you for spending some time with me and thank you to LCTV for this great opportunity. My name is Sean Reed and I'm running for School Committee to bring a new generation of leadership to Lynn Public Schools. Public education is deeply personal to me. It's personal to me as someone who has experienced firsthand how Lynn Public Schools can transform a child's life. I wasn't always the best student in or out of the classroom. To further complicate my educational journey, I faced a number of personal hurdles such as housing insecurity and coming from a low-income household without a single high school diploma. Despite this, my teachers, counselors, and administrators pushed me forward, never gave up, and got me to where I am today. I want to make sure every student is given the same level of support and afforded similar opportunities regardless of their situation. Speaking of teachers, education is also personal to me as the husband of a Lynn Public Schools special education teacher, coach, and union building representative, as well as a friend to so many other LPS educators and staff. This has really given me an on-the-ground perspective into what our teachers are facing. Most times, my wife comes home passionate and proud about the work she did that day. However, there are some days where she's burnt out, tired, and feeling unsupported. And these days remind me of how much work there is to be done. Teachers aren't just the pillars of our school, but the backbone of our community. And finally, education is personal to me as someone who's going to raise his future family in the city. Of course, we want better schools for improved educational outcomes, but improving our schools extends even beyond that. Better schools means attracting more opportunities for economic growth, creating safer neighborhoods, strengthening our sense of community, and so much more. Schools matter to all of us. But I know passion isn't always enough. I also have the experience to do the job. In my work as District Director for Senator Brendan Creighton, I get to work on the most pressing issues facing constituents, including education. Many of the problems our schools are facing involve the state government, so having someone with experience navigating state policy and agencies will be extremely valuable to the committee. I also have extensive experience working on initiatives that support our youth, including my involvement in various organizations such as the Lynn Rotary Club, friends and alumni of Lynn Classical, the Shannon Collaborative, North Shore Community Colleges Board of Trustees, and co-founding an organization, Kayak and Sail Lynn. Additionally, I have lots of experience with campaigns and community organizing. I believe this skill is important because to get the results we want, we will need to collectively and efficiently come together to stand up for our students, lift our voices, and rally around key issues. Let's not sugarcoat it, we have some serious obstacles ahead. Why is it in a city like Lynn where we pride ourselves on having people from all walks of life, are there students who feel out of place, unaccommodated, or unsafe? How come in a region with a surplus of unfilled, well-paying jobs, that so many of our graduates and families struggle? Into the year 2023, in one of the wealthiest states, in a state that prides itself on its education, do we have schools in such bad conditions and in some cases literally crumbling? But with great challenges come greater opportunities. Knowing the talent of our students, the hard-working nature of our educators, and the character of our city as a whole, there's no doubt that together we can transform LPS into a top-notch 21st century public education system for all of our students. Together, we can modernize our system doing several things. Developing better career and college pathways. Creating an environment where all students feel welcomed, supported, and safe. Expanding pre-K. And of course, pushing for reforms that will allow us to build new schools and improve our current facilities. Clearly, the only path forward is together, so I'll need your help. I humbly ask for one of your six votes for School Committee on September 5th and then again on November 7th. Also, if you have any time at all to help out the campaign, please reach out and we'll find a way for you to make a difference. I look forward to talking with you all over the next several months. I'd love to hear your questions, ideas, and concerns. So please feel free to call me, text me, email me, or reach out to me on social media. The future will and can be bright, but the moment we're currently in is pivotal. We have an incoming superintendent, a new pickering in the pipeline, and the continued infusion of additional state dollars. We need someone who's ready to hit the ground running, which I'm confident that I can do, and I hope you all agree. Thank you for listening.
Well, good morning, everyone. My name is Daniel Richard. I am a candidate for the Lynn School Committee. I have lived in Lynn my whole life. I am a graduate of Lynn Classical High School, 2008, but also too, I am a parent to a Lynn Public School student as well. I want to talk to you today a little bit about myself and what I've done and what I've accomplished and why I'm running for School Committee as well. As I mentioned before, I have grown up in the city. I was an athlete my whole life, but also too, I had started a business in Lynn. I'm a business owner and I am associated with many different nonprofits and organizations in the city of Lynn as well. But I wanted to talk to you about why I'm running for Lynn School Committee. I think it's very important to have representation on the Lynn School Committee and many different backgrounds. And once again, I am Latino. My son is Latino, but also what's very different is that my son is autistic. And having somebody on the Lynn School Committee representing families with kids that are autistic, I think is extremely important. I think it is very valuable to have somebody on that School Committee that is a voice for a lot of those families, because as you know, that population, that growing base is getting bigger and bigger and more and more kids are having autistic diagnoses. And it's important that families know how to navigate that field and know how to answer questions, but also advocate and learn how to get services for their kids. And I know that I can be a voice for those families on the Lynn School Committee. Also too, working in financial services, I want to bring financial literacy to Lynn Public Schools as well. That is something that I'm very passionate about, that I'd like to see happen in the next coming years if I get elected to Lynn School Committee. And also too, I want to help out in the ESL program. Myself being Latino, Spanish having my second language, but also dating a woman who, her first language is English and having four kids and all of her kids, their second language is English, I see the struggles that they've had to go through, but also I've seen the positives and the triumphs that they've gone through as well. And also I want to be an advocate for that community as well, because that is a big community in the city of Lynn. And I know that there's still a lot of work that needs to be done in that department as well. So once again, my name is Daniel Richard. I'm running for Lynn School Committee. Let me be a voice for people that either have kids with autism, that want to have some financial literacy, or their language is Spanish preferred and they're starting to learn English as they go through the Lynn Public School System. So in September, in November, I respectfully ask for one of your six votes and let me be your voice on the Lynn School Committee. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Andrea Sadowite and I'm running for Lynn School Committee. This may be my first run for office, but I'm certainly no stranger to the Lynn Public School System. I myself attended the Lynn Public School System. I went to Ingalls, Marshalls, and Lynn Tech. I also am a former school nurse for Marshall Middle School and I was a float school nurse that traveled the district. I currently have three children, two in which are in the Lynn Public School System, one is in elementary school and the other is in high school. My third child will be entering the Lynn Public School System next year. I'm not running for Lynn School Committee as an individual. I'm running as a parent, a former employee, and a former student. I am also a nurse practitioner, certified in both family and pediatrics. And I know that the health of our school system goes beyond the outward appearance. I will examine and diagnose the challenges that we face in the Lynn Public School System. And just as I advocate for my patients, I will advocate for your student and mine. One of the primary focuses that I would like to focus on is safety. I have five focuses: safety, student achievement, educational training, special education, and community partnerships. I believe that safety should be the top priority. Our students and staff should be able to go to school and feel safe in the environment that they have to go to every day. And if they don't, it is our responsibility to fix that. One idea that I have is where we currently have community resource offices for Lynn. They don't staff every school, but I believe that we should at minimum staff the larger populated schools such as the middle schools and the high schools. In regards to student achievement, we need to make sure that we are assessing the policies and procedures on a regular basis, so that we can see which ones are being most effective. This way, our students have a better opportunity to succeed. In regards to educational training, as I mentioned previously, being a Lynn Tech graduate, I know that we have an exceptional trade school. The problem is, there's a capacity and we are only limited to the amount of students that we're able to accept at that school. And it's no secret that Lynn has more residents than we can handle. I think that it's important for us to try to find another way to make our students successful, so that students don't have a disadvantage. For example, our students at high schools have to take an elective anyways. Why not replace the electives with a certification process? So that at the end of graduation, you end up with a certification. That way, you may or may not choose to use that later on, but at least you have that moving forward. As a wife of a special education attorney and as a former Lynn Public School nurse who tailored IEPs, I know that it's hard to be able to have all the resources that we need for special education. However, we need to make sure that we are equipping all students to be successful. It doesn't matter your differences or disabilities, we need to make sure that we have adequate resources and materials for everyone to be successful. And in regards to community partnerships, we could look at this at two approaches: regional and local. On a local approach, why not partner with a financial institution? So that they could teach our students financial literacy? That way, they can teach them how to buy their first home, plant that seed, so that they can be successful later on. On a regional approach, for example, we drive around Lynn every day and we see details with police officers that have Salem, Peabody, Lynnfield. Why not partner with neighboring cities and towns? So that if one of our issues is that we don't have enough Lynn officers to have enough adequate resource officers, let's partner with these neighboring cities and towns to use them to be resource officers, so that we have enough, so that we can all feel safe. These are only some ways. I hope that you choose to vote Andrea Sadowite for Lynn School Committee on September 5th and November 7th. I want to be your voice for your student and mine.
Nelson Mandela, a world-renowned political leader famously said, "Education is the most powerful weapon that you can use to change the world." Lynn residents, what kind of change do you want to see for the betterment of the Lynn Public Schools? Do you want business as usual? Or do you want voice equity, a seat at the table which you would have with me as your candidate? Greetings. My name is Judith Wilson. I am a citizen of the United States of America, having emigrated from the lovely island of Jamaica. For the past 36 years, I have called this historic city home. I am a mother, a local author, a social worker, mental health therapist, a former Lynn Public School substitute teacher, who is not restricted to these major positions. I characterize myself as genuine, committed, and passionate about the issues that affect the people I serve. I come before you today as a candidate for the School Committee with both pride and humility. You might be wondering, why am I running for School Committee? I am running because Lynn is poised to make significant contributions to this community and I want you and I to be part of this change. Change to include the improvement of our educational system. You had the same message when I spoke with several of you. We want change. I want you to know that I heard you. I also want the same things for your children as you do. You desire safer schools, classroom environments that are safe for learning, enough support for the social and emotional health of both students and teachers. High-quality instruction that uses cutting-edge curriculum for all schools. Improvement with academic skills that will position students for success academically and professionally. Adequate instructional time for special education students. Building and maintaining strong partnerships with families, the community, stakeholders, equipping and providing teachers with the resources that they need. I will advocate for sheer innovative ideas, promote, and support initiatives already in place that have proven to be helpful. I would also bring your issues to the forefront. Your worries are my concerns and I am concerned about the issues that matter to you and your children. My vision for the Lynn Public School is for them to become a model, both locally and statewide, leaving a lasting impression by giving every student a strong educational foundation. Our students are the future of the world's future leaders and we must provide them with a solid academic foundation and pathways to future education. All students should have access to high-quality education that will boost the city's economy, support... que aumentará la economía de la ciudad, apoye y produce estudiantes diligentes, cultivar tenacidad, entusiasmo por el aprendizaje y grandes líderes. Si ustedes, los residentes de Lynn, eligieran que me sirvan en el comité escolar, no tomaría mis deberes o el mandato prestado a mí por ustedes輕ly. Cuando estén listos para emitir su voto, piensen en los cambios que quieren ver en las escuelas de Lynn. Me gustaría hacer esta pregunta a ustedes nuevamente. ¿Quieren negociación como siempre o quieres voz de equidad? Un asiento en la mesa que tendrías conmigo como candidato. Le pido que vote por la persona o personas que ustedes creen que preocupan por ustedes y el futuro de sus hijos. Me apreciaría que emitieran uno de sus votos para mí y les agradezco en advance por su consideración. Juntos somos más fuertes.